I'd like to welcome everybody to the 2020 Carpinteria School Board Candidates Forum. I'm your host Larry Nimmer. I've taught video production at Carp High and I've sat through many school board meetings as I take them for the public. We're sponsored by the Alcazar Theater and you'll find us live on their Facebook page. This is what it says in my script. It didn't quite work out that way. We were having technical problems getting on for some reason. But afterwards, after the forum, we'll repost this in a better quality version on the Alcazar's Facebook page and elsewhere. Let's make sure we have a good connection. Craig Cook is not with us today. He's camping. He thought he'd be able to join us, but he wasn't able to get a connection. So let's start off Craig Cook. No, Craig Cook is not there. Rogelio Delgado, are you there?
Yes.
How are you Rogelio?
Very good, thank you Larry.
Good. Jamie Diamond, are you there?
Hey Larry.
And how are you Jamie?
Doing wonderful this evening, thank you.
Thank you. Aaron Smith, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you, thank you.
Good. You're doing okay too Aaron?
Yep, doing great.
And lastly Jeff Weinbender, how are you and can you hear me?
I'm glad to hear you and I hear you well.
Okay, thank you very much. Now during the forum, viewers can post their questions for the candidates on my Larry Nimmer Facebook page and some of these questions will be used later in the forum. We encourage the candidates to post their answers later to the questions from the Facebook page. Particularly if they're questions for individual candidates, candidates you'll have an opportunity afterwards to go to that Facebook page and answer any questions. We expect the forum to be about an hour and a half long. Towards the end of the forum, we'll post a link to actually ask questions live on the Zoom session and I'll tell you more how to do that later. But in the meantime, you can post any questions to Larry Nimmer's Facebook page and they'll be relayed to me to ask you later in the forum. Our timekeeper and technical assistant is Tara O'Reilly, our retired librarian and my wife, and she'll be doing the timekeeping. She'll put up a paddle that says 15 seconds when there's 15 seconds left. And then when your time's up, she'll put up a stop sign. You may actually hear the beep too from the timer. If you keep on talking, I have an option to mute you, sorry about that. Now the format will be first we'll have opening statements from all of you, then you'll answer questions, then we'll have a show and tell segment, followed by a general discussion, I'll explain more later. Then you'll answer questions that have come in on Facebook and then a few possible live Zoom questions. So, let's start everybody. We're going to start with Rogelio Delgado. You have up to two minutes to give us an opening statement and say whatever you want.
Thank you very much. Me llamo Rogelio Delgado, nací en México. Mis padres no tuvieron educación pero querían que sus hijos asistieran a la universidad. Gradué de la preparatoria de carpintería del Colegio de Santa Bárbara, de la Universidad de Loyola Marymount y de la Universidad de California de Los Ángeles, una maestría en educación. Enseñado en todos los niveles académicos, ahora sigo el ejemplo de mis padres, dándoles la educación que se merecen. Andrea Delgado estudia segundo año de medicina en la Universidad de Boston. Ana Delgado estudia sociología el cuarto año en la Universidad de Santa Bárbara. Mónica Delgado estudia el segundo año de la preparatoria en carpintería. My name is Rogelio Delgado, born and raised in Mexico. My father, my mother, they didn't have an education, but they wanted their children to have an education. I attended Carpenteria High School, SBCC, LMU and UCLA with a master's degree in education. I have taught at every academic level. Now, my wife and myself are following my father's steps, giving my daughters the education that they deserve. Andrea Delgado, she's on her second year of medical school at Boston University. Ana Delgado, she's on her fourth year studying sociology at UCSB. Mónica Delgado.
15 seconds left.
Second year at Carpenteria High School, thank you.
Okay, well, thank you very much Rogelio. Let's see, next is Jamie Diamond. Go ahead with your two minute opening statement.
Hey everybody. Carpinterians, you, our children and our community are why I'm running for CUSD School Board trustee. Let me introduce myself, I'm Jamie Diamond and I have called carpentry at my home since 2003. My husband Jason and I were married in 2005. We have three children, Matthew who's 14 and eighth grade at CMS, Molly is 10 in fifth grade at Cannolino, and Max is three and hopefully a future DLI student. My husband and I own Start a Squirt Fishing in the Santa Barbara Harbor and enjoy being outside with our family. I also love cooking and feeding people, food is at the heart of most things in life. I've been an active participant with our schools in various capacities since my husband and I made the choice to join the Carpinteria Public School System when my oldest son, now 14, started kindergarten at Cannolino. Starting as a vice president for Parents for Cannolino, I served there for five years. I am currently president of Parents for Carpinteria Middle School. I am on the Parent Advisory Council and I've been to more school board meetings than I can remember. I also am the coordinator for the Food Bank here in Carpinteria. I advocate for student access to opportunities that many of our students would never otherwise have via school field trips. I point out problems within the district and school board but have always followed up by offering solutions. And I've worked tirelessly on reducing food insecurity among students and families. I get things done and done well. Board member character and integrity is of the utmost importance to me. You will not see me deferring to a party line or be a mouthpiece for someone else. I am deeply invested in our students' character as well. We need to have a district that creates an environment to foster our students' critical thinking, truth-seeking, along with offering rigorous academic opportunities. One that promotes resiliency, encourages leaders to grow, ensures equity for all students, giving them a safe place for growth by both success and failures, and creating global citizens led by integrity and humility. I want our schools, students and community to be better. More than that, I want our best. Not too much to ask for, right?
Okay, well, thank you. That time is up there, very good. Next, Aaron Smith, you have up to two minutes.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Aaron Smith. I am running for Carpenter Unified School Board because I want to give back to my community. My wife Sarah and I were both born and raised in Carpinteria. Today is actually our 20th wedding anniversary and I'm glad to be spending it on Zoom with all of you. Just kidding. Both of us went through the public school system in Carpinteria, from grade school to high school. I have so many wonderful memories going to school in our small town. We feel blessed to be able to continue to live in this wonderful area and raise our children here. Now our children are going to the same schools we went to. We have three children, Asher who's a freshman at Carp High, Holiday and Lucia are both in the fifth grade at Cannolino. My wife has served on both the boards of Parents for Cannolino and the Carpenter Education Foundation for the last 10 years. I currently serve as a board member for the Carpenter High School Boosters Club. I have worked for Channel Island Surfboards for the last 23 years and I'm currently the Director of Production and Product Development. We love watching our children play sports like water polo and soccer, spend the rest of our free time at the beach. I'm running with the focus to continue the work being done to bring more equity to our district and close our learning gap. I'm in strong support of athletics, arts and extracurricular activities. We need programs that inspire our children to learn and reach for the stars. We need to take a good look at our curriculum with the goal to inspire every student in our district. I'm ready to work hard and make decisions with our students' interests first. Thank you very much.
Okay, well, thank you. And just a reminder, Craig Cook couldn't get a connection to join us today, he's camping with his family, he expressed his apologies. And now for our last opening statement from Jeff Weinbender, go ahead.
Good evening. Thank you Larry, Tara, the Alcazar Theater, school board members, candidates and all of you watching. I'm so glad to see that you care about our schools. I'm Jeff Weinbender. I graduated from Westmont College in 1989 with a degree in economics and business. After I graduated, I then attended San Jose City College, San Jose State, Santa Barbara City College and UCSB where I received other degrees and certifications. I'm a rare individual who's attended all those different forms of California schools, City College, Cal State University, UCs, private colleges, and I'm aware of the great service they can provide our students and our community. I've been teaching since 1991. I met my wife while teaching. She was a new English teacher at our school. We fell in love in Carpinteria and we fell in love with Carpinteria. We've been blessed to call Carp our home for the past 20 years. We have a daughter who's in eighth grade and education is a big topic in our household. This past year has highlighted how vital and important our schools are like never before. This is a crucial time for our students and our schools. I'm running because I want to help and I believe I can offer the type of experience and sound decision our schools need. As we guide our schools, we must always keep our eyes on student needs. Consider them first. Our students need to have equity in their education. Students succeed when they care. We need to work together to foster an environment of student equity. I believe in public service and I want to thank those of you who serve our school board and my fellow candidates who are willing to serve.
Well, thank you very much. Okay, we're ready now to go to the questions. The questions that we're starting with came in from the Alcazar Theater Board, from the community, from the Coastal View News and other sources. And by the way, we're rotating who starts each time. The candidates were not given the questions ahead of time. I'm going to go into gallery view here now. So we're going to start with Jamie Diamond. And the first question is, what are the educational strengths in our current school district and what are our weaknesses? And how do you plan on fixing the shortcomings? Go ahead Jamie, 90 seconds.
Thanks for the softball.
Sorry.
Okay, so I think that I believe that our teachers have only had a couple of years under their belt with some new curriculum and it's hard to really get a good grasp. I think that the first year with the new common core curriculum was rough because it wasn't coming out quick enough and they were struggling to teeter between two different types of curriculum. The second year was their first year of full implementation and since then I feel like they've been able to build on that. There's a couple of years of students who were really in that transition who I think have been able to rebound and really recover and grasp the hold of the new curriculum. I also believe that teachers are looking at a more holistic approach in general around the district. I know that the reading intervention program, it works, but it takes time. I know that from my own family's experience with the program. I do believe that it's unfortunate that some of the more technical electives at the high school, things like that have gone by the wayside because that can really engage students. If students are able to engage in some part of their education, it motivates them to do better in other areas. So I feel like offering more opportunities for students to engage in something that they relate to and that they feel ownership in will help encourage their growth in other areas of education.
Thank you. Okay, excellent. Next we have Aaron Smith, same question, go ahead.
Yeah, I think there's many strengths in our school district. My kids have had wonderful teachers. I mean, they've had classes they struggled in and they've worked through it with the help of their teachers. I think we could do a better job with our teachers, inspiring them to have a growth mindset and keep working on themselves to be better, which will in turn inspire the kids to want to work better for themselves and strive for that education. I think we do a pretty good job, but we can work with curriculum. We've seen it over the last couple of months where the kids really demanded some different books to read and it shouldn't be very hard to start at the beginning and give them a variety of books from different authors and really start to inspire them to learn from a young age. We can't wait till the end when they graduate to inspire them.
Okay, thank you very much. Let's see, now we have Jeff Weinbender, go ahead Jeff.
Sure, thank you Larry. You know, when I look at our school district, I kind of look at a good report card sometimes is the California Department of Education, which has some interesting information about our schools. And one of the things it showcases is, we see that in the elementary schools, we have had a history of being below state average by the majority of our students when it comes to English and ELA scores. We also see that we've had at times chronic absenteeism. And our strengths have been, we have great school spirit throughout our schools, we have high school programs that are successful. We see our students in Carpinteria when they get to the high school level, those ELA scores have been caught up and part of that's by the reading programs we have and good things in place and like Aaron said, some great teachers that we have in our area. I think what we could do is possibly look towards some resources towards that elementary school English learning and try to improve that. And I think having perhaps refocus of some counseling strategies, try to work with students to keep them here in school. I think as much as we can personalize and make school about you and show our students that we care about you and that we're here to help your education, the more the student can build in a personal equity and take stake in their education, I think we'll see those things improve.
Okay, well, thank you. And lastly Rogelio, go ahead.
Yes, first, I think that our teaching staff at every level, elementary level, middle school, high school level, they're good, they're excellent. We have, let's say, 2,000 students roughly speaking and we can compete academically with any high school. And the proof is that Carpenter High School has been sending students to the best universities in the world, Stanford, Boston Harbor, UCLA, USC. That's excellence and that's a combination of two things. That's students, efforts to move forward with the best teachers. That's the one-two combination that our district can offer. And that's a good strength that we have. And also I think that our weakness could have been the lack of equity that we have had for ages. And thank you to this diverse life or narrative group for waking us up. Thank you.
Thank you Rogelio. Now we're going on to our second question. And let's see, Aaron Smith will answer this first. The question is, many of our local children are underprivileged. What steps can you as a school board member take to help level the playing field for them? Also, what if any steps do you suggest to prioritize the district's commitment to racial justice? And so we'll start with Aaron, go ahead.
Well, we've seen it with the pandemic and the whole Zoom issue come into play and it's affected those children more than any other children. I know our district has taken a hard look at how to help them and I think they've done a pretty good job sending counselors and school staff to check on them, give them all the resources they can get. That being said, moving forward, I think there's room for, you know, specific programs, maybe, I mean, as far as the board members, we can help guide the direction of the superintendent, creating programs, helping those students would be a long-term thing, but I think we can find ways to get more counselors in there and to help. We just need to get them into school and really get them inspired to want to be at school and want to learn. And through, you know, changing some of the reading material that they get, trying to inspire them at a young age to stay in school is going to be very important.
Okay, thank you very much. Next Jeff Weinbender, same question.
Thank you. You know, I look at, yeah, this is a couple of things. We have a community that does really care about everybody and I really appreciate that. We look at how groups like the Rotary have gotten involved and giving out things in the high schools. And I think when we go to the elementary schools, we could involve outside groups, but as school boards, we need to look to find ways to find each student. The hard part sometimes in schools is people fall through the cracks. And I think that really stems from counseling departments and administrative teams looking in to check out on each and every student. I commend the ways we've done this in Carpinteria. I think community involvement's a key. You threw in the part about racial justice, if you will, and you know, as a US history teacher, this is something I've been teaching for years in the classroom. I think one of the keys is to teach real US history where you tell the stories of many people and look to how we work together as a nation to solve our problems. And I think it's kind of the same way here for Carp when it comes to our school board. We need to work together to solve the problems we have and reaching out for, look for every student, make sure nobody falls through the cracks. That's kind of what I have for you.
Okay, well, thank you. Next up Craig Cook, same question, no Craig's not here, thank you. Rogelio, you're next, go ahead.
Carpinteria is a small city with a population, let's say of 14,000, it's going to be probably like 18, but one fact is that 65, 70% of its population is Hispanic. So that means that that same presence shows other districts where Hispanics, students who are Hispanic, let's say, it's the same 60, 65%. And a lot of them are monolingual, a lot of parents are monolingual, cannot use technology. And that is why there was this group that there was a survival narrative for months, for months, probably four, at least four, for months where they fought for equity. They fought for something that no board had ever even thought about that, no teacher had ever thought about that, and actually these students died of a lesson. Thank you.
Thank you. And now we're going to go to Jamie Diamond in just a second, but I just wanted to make a reminder that any viewers can put any questions down for the candidates on this Facebook live feed on my site Larry Nimmer and hopefully we'll get to some of them. So Jamie Diamond, same question to you.
So I've actually worked, I'm on the advisory board of the 93013 Fund and one of my actions was to create school supply bags to hand out to students while we're in this pandemic. Specifically, the school was able to identify the most at need, at risk students. And as I believe it was Jeff said, you know, it's great to reach out to other groups, but we need to look within. And that's the type of thinking though, you know, we need to look at meeting people where they are, not waiting for them to get to where we need them to be. And so I believe, I believe there's a lot of teachers in our district who actually have already been working on bringing in more social justice into the classrooms and bringing in more, for example, more literature that's written by authors of color. I know the middle school team has already met those standards. And I think there's a lot of teachers who are excited to really help give all of our students a curriculum that they can relate to, teach them in ways that they can relate. Teaching history from all the different viewpoints, not just from one viewpoint is really important, but as far as equity, really meeting the students where they are and realizing that everybody's starting from a different point on the starting line and we need to give them all that level start so we don't have kids starting from way back here.
Okay, thank you Jamie. Let's see, our next question is the following, by the way, these were all sent in from different people in the community. The question is, historically, the Carpenteria Unified School District and CAWS, the union, have struggled, and I believe it's the union that represents the teachers, have struggled to maintain effective lines of communication. What will you do to improve this relationship to benefit our students? And we start with Jeff Weinbender, go ahead Jeff.
Thank you. Well, as being a teacher for, I don't know, since 1991, I don't know how many years that is now, I guess I should do math a little quicker, 29 years, 24, anyway. For a teaching pro as long as I have, I've seen unions and school boards adversarial and I've seen them work together and I'll tell you, it works a whole lot better when they work together. Step one is you've got to be transparent. There's no reason to hide anything from anybody. We shouldn't be playing games with the teachers' union, they shouldn't be playing games with the school board. You've got to have open communication. I've actually, as a candidate, reached out, as the president of CAWS, okay? I don't know what that is, I get a good echo. I've reached out to the president of CAWS already and had good conversations with him. I've known him for 20, 30 years and I think you have to have open lines of communication. You can't keep people in the dark, you've got to be transparent. And I think we could get great ideas from our teachers' unions as well as parents' other groups. You've got to keep everybody in the conversation. Why wouldn't you want to hear their opinions on how to solve the problems that face our school board? So I believe in honesty, transparency and having open lines of communication and that's the way you get things done.
Okay, very good. Rogelio, you're next on this question.
Oh, yes, actually that was the platform of 2016 and that's my platform for 2020, I've been on that board for 40 years. I've been there, I mean, I have only missed one meeting in 40 years and that's something that I'm still looking for, transparency. Because of the same fact that what I have found are not the whole truth, but only half of the truth. And that affects both the union and the district and that's something that also affects the students. So this is what I, what I think that I have talked to board members, to union leadership, let's, all of you, why don't you get together, get a cup of coffee and get friends because there's been like a tug of war for I don't know how many years and the teachers, for this pandemic, to help, the budget, actually they agreed not to get an increase in salary for a couple of years. And that's something that should be appreciated. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you Rogelio. Next up Jamie Diamond, go ahead.
Hey, okay, so this is something that as a parent, I've spoken very vocally about at school board meetings for years, especially at springtime, at budget session time. As a parent, I have always felt like I had to choose between the union and the school board or the district. And really my only choice is my kids. Our only choice as parents should be our students. There has been a toxic relationship for years and I have been seeking transparency, but there's a difference between the passive act of just looking for transparency versus creating an opportunity for transparency. So we need restoration in the relationship between the union and the district. between the union and the district. There's decades of mistrust, and there's decades of baggage. And we need to figure out a way to let it go now, so we can move on in a more productive way. I've had so many people say they feel, come to me and say, they feel like there's the union, the district, and the teachers. And that they don't feel a connection between what they see going on at the two leadership roles versus how they feel as, as other teachers. And so, so I really am looking to create restoration and a clear path to move forward. I feel like a clearing of the decks is needed. You just got to like, get it all out there, rip off the Band-Aid, say what needs to be said, and then move on. And, and although I can't make that, I can't sit everybody down in a room and make it happen, I can direct, make directives as a school board member, that that's what I would like to see happen.
Okay, thank you, Jamie. And finally, Aaron Smith, go ahead with your answer.
Yeah, I'm kind of on the same page as Jamie. Traditionally, it's been the students first, because that's who I have in the district. That's my main focus, is that the students are, get the best teachers and the best services. And sometimes there's a conflict between services and teacher salaries. And that's where the union gets in the way. However, I also have a brother who's a teacher in the district. So I'm looking at both sides of it. You know, they need to be compensated so that they can have freedom to teach our kids the best they can. So we have to find a balance. We have to find ways to negotiate and have open discussions about what true needs are, and how we can make changes if we need to, to the way they're compensated, or what we have to, but we have to have these discussions. I've had discussions recently with teachers who are upset that, you know, the school, the school board, and everybody's not really communicating with the teachers. Well, we need to fix that. We need to, we need to communicate with the teachers on what's going on, on a, on a weekly, if not daily basis. But there are many teachers, and just like any corporation, you know, sometimes the lower level employees don't hear from the top. So we have to figure out how to close that gap. And that helps in corporations. And I've seen it happen. So that's what we got to focus on.
Hey, thank you. Okay, for the next question, I'm going to ask one that came in on Facebook, Jamie Bulch Collins. And she asks, as a leader during this difficult time, this is about COVID-19, the pandemic. So she says, as a leader during this difficult time, how would you have responded differently to the reopening plan? And if elected, what would you do to support the ongoing recovery? And we start with Rahelio Delgado this time. Go ahead.
Oh, yes. Thank you. We have all suffered through this pandemic for months. I felt like being in jail at my own home. Now imagine a pandemic through the eyes of a kid who couldn't play outside, who couldn't go to a movie theater, who couldn't go to visit any friend. That's something that really, really hurt everybody. And that is why, but that danger is still there. Because remember, red is red, meaning watch out. Because despite that, the metrics have changed to red, we still need, students still need masks, social distance, and that's why they're going to have to, the employees are going to have to take care of elementary students every minute that they're at school. And also, when we have the 2000, the middle school and high school students, everybody at the school side, they need to take care of them even more. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you. Let's see, Jamie Diamond will be next on the issue of the pandemic. Go ahead, Jamie.
Thanks, Larry. So I feel like everybody did the best they could to shuffle things in the beginning and make it happen. And, and, and really, I feel I'm so grateful to our district for what they did. And I know that talks between the district and the union seem to go well in the beginning, as far as how they would continue. Part of the problem is, is everything would change from one day to the next on a governmental level, let alone a local level. And so there was a lot of, of trying to, it was hard because you want to be ahead of the game. And yet, as soon as you did something, the CDC or the state would come out with something else that would contradict the very plan that you thought was so great and brilliant. And, and it would contradict it, and you'd have to start all over. I would have changed the way surveys had been done. Surveys were going out, it seemed like every, every week at one point, every other week. And, and I would have streamlined that process, waited till we knew a little bit more information about what going back to school could look like when it gets a little bit closer. I feel like there was a lot of just kind of grasping at straws. And I understand that, because nobody knew what to do. But cooler heads have to prevail. We have to sit down, look at what's going on, and say, what can we realistically do? I think the district did a great job of securing quite a bit of PPE in their inventory. I've seen the list. It's pretty remarkable. But I believe that we could definitely have done some more to shore up the options for our students who will not be returning in person. And, and that could relieve a little bit of the pressure. And maybe if there was a more adequate program, we could have had more kids choosing to stay home.
Okay, thank you, Jamie. And next is Aaron Smith on this difficult pandemic issue.
Yeah, this is, this has been tough. It's, it's one of those things where, I don't know, there's no perfect answer. I mean, I reopened two businesses under the pandemic as soon as we were allowed to, and have had no issues. But we were very careful, went by the book, followed all the rules, and we continue to follow all the rules. Now, does that mean we're, we're never going to have a case? No, it doesn't. But we're doing the best we can, and we need to operate and, and continue to, to make money for the employees. Now, for the students, that's a whole nother issue. Obviously, we're adults and they're children. I think the plan is good. I've looked at it many times. I think it is thorough. I wish there was a third option for some students who don't want to go back. I feel there could be something in the middle where they can continue to Zoom, because they have the option only to go to school or go independent study. And I think there could have been something else if they would have done some more surveys. I think we could have found a group of kids who could continue to Zoom with a separate teacher, and they're in a separate class. But that's okay. That, that's, I presented that to the board as soon as they, as soon as it got passed. But, you know, there, there's some things that these can't accomplish. But I think they could have done something else.
Okay. Well, thank you all for that tough issue. And thank you for your answers. And next, oh, I'm sorry. I'm glad you interrupted. Thank you, Jeff, your opportunity to answer.
Yeah, and I, you know, I'm going to echo a lot of what's been said so far, and what's said so far is true. Look, it's been a really tough thing, and we had to give a lot of grace to our teachers and our schools when it first hit. We have had a constant moving goal line, right? We'd get information that we need 15 days to stop the spread. 15 days, it's been months, right? So the CDC would give one set of guidelines and directions, and then almost contradict itself later. We are struggling with figuring out how best to handle this pandemic. And you see the whole country doing it. In schools, what we've seen is we've gone remote. And in many cases, the achievement gap has only grown. So we have this double problem of, one, trying to reach out to the emotional mental status of our students who are struggling in ways they've never had to struggle before. And at the same time, we need to challenge students. I think that sometimes we've had activities which were almost a step up from babysitting. We need to have something that challenges our students while we are still trying to support them. You know, I look to, a lot of people try to figure out when we go back to school. I think more still needs to be looked into how we go back. We can see other states and other schools. We can see their failures. We can see their successes. And we can hopefully learn from them by the time we are back fully. But keeping safety as the number one goal. We've got to keep our schools safe.
Okay, well, thank you. We're going to the next question that came in. This question is from Mary Beth Cardy. She says, what have you done to actively help the students and families of this district prior to throwing your hat in the ring? And why are you running for this office? And I believe we start with Rahelio. Go ahead.
Yes, what I've been doing is, I have said it many times on board meetings, statements, verbally, writing, that, that being a Latino, Antcargria, being basically a Hispanic city, and actually, I'm humble. I'm very humble, very, very humble. My parents were migrants. So if we see Juan David walking down the street, that's me. That's me. And I talk to them, have a cup of coffee. And lately, they have approached me to talk about board meetings. And that concerns that they have. And I, that's why I've been a board member for four years. I listen to them. I, I tell them, I will never fail you. I'm here for you. I will never resign. And I'm still here to help everyone.
Okay. Thank you. Let's see, Jamie Diamond is next. And I'm going to repeat the question from Mary Beth Cardy. What have you done to actively help the students and families of this district prior to throwing your hat in the ring? And why are you running for this office? Go ahead, Jamie Diamond.
Thanks, Mary Beth, for a great question. So as I mentioned in my opening statement, I was the vice president of Parents for Catalino for the last five years. And last year and this year, I am the president of Parents for Carpinteria Middle School. I also am one of the coordinators at the Carpinteria Food Bank, and I was one of the co-founders of the Carpinteria Food Pantry after the mudslide. I have actively gotten more equitable access to field trips among our schools. I was able to get Catalino to finally switch over to going to Catalina, the Catalina Island, science trip after decades of going to El Capitan, while Aliso got to get that awesome, amazing experience. So I'm really proud of being able to get Catalino on board with that as well. My next move there is to get all of our elementary schools to go at the same time, to help them all get to know each other a little bit better, and when they integrate into the middle school. At the middle school, I've done the same thing with field trips, getting field trips that are more relatable, that are more enjoyable, that the kids really can learn from. It's educational, but also exciting for them. So I've been trying to constantly think of, you know, my kids and what I would want for them. But, but the truth is, it's, it's what I can do for everybody else. Honestly, my kids, and not to come off weird, but, I mean, my kids were privileged. I'm able to get to provide things for them. And so when I do things like Catalina, it, it's not for my own kids, because neither of my kids have actually gotten to go. It's, it's for other people's kids. And I just want everybody to have a really great childhood and growing up experience at school.
Okay, thank you, Jamie. Let's see, next, Aaron Smith, same question.
Yes. Well, the way I look at it, my wife and I are one unit. Traditionally, she's been the one to volunteer. She's been on CEF for 10 years, and Parents for Catalino for 10 years. She kind of took the reins on that. And, and she's done wonderful things. And I've always helped out with Carpet Gabana, the Orchard Ocean Run, whatever, whatever we needed help with, I'm, I'm there by her side helping. We had a discussion earlier this year, you know, hey, it's, it's your turn now. You need to step up. So this is me stepping up and ready to serve my community.
Great, thank you. And lastly, Jeff Weinbender, what's your answer to this question?
Well, you know, I'm kind of in a weird way, almost like at a disadvantage, because my full-time job, you know, is, is been a teacher. I taught high school, then I've taught junior high for a number of years since. So my full-time job, I'm always teaching, and I've been in other districts. You know, I live here in Carpinteria, but I've been involved in other districts. But I still have gotten involved from years ago in our local area. I, years ago, volunteered to help out a friend of mine, Greg Wall, help with carp soccer, Carp High. I am not a soccer guy, but I could go fill the water and help out with him there. I got involved years ago as a youth leader here with civic groups. I, I have, I've taught Sunday School here in town. I've been involved with things like this. I've had, when our daughter was in AYSO, I did volunteer to, to ref. I tried my best with that. Little things that you try to get involved with in this community. But yeah, I've kind of been mostly involved as a school teacher in other areas. But I'm always free to help out with civic groups in any way I can.
Okay, well, thank you. Now, we're going to move on to a different segment. And this is the show and tell segment. Jamie Diamond will be first. And let me just explain this. The candidates were informed ahead of time that they'd have up to 90 seconds to share something in show and tell, including a family member if they want to share them. So Jamie, you're up next for show and tell, and you'll have up to 90 seconds.
Okay, I'm going to have a little Mr. Rogers moment and change my jacket here. So I am incredibly proud of my family. My husband is my rock, and I love my kids. I adore them. They are my world. But what I'm most proud of is related to this jacket right here. This was my father's. He passed away a month before my 18th birthday. He was a lawyer and, and fought for people who, just, he took, he took on in personal injury cases, wrongful death, and wrongful termination cases. The point is, at his funeral, there was a group of people that my mom, my brother and I had never met. We had no clue why they were there. They came up to us and said, hey, you don't know us, and your dad never wanted you to. Were people that he represented pro bono and never told a soul about. He, we didn't, we weren't able to provide a voice for ourselves, and he was our voice. And he helped us when we needed it. And that's the legacy he left me, and I want to leave my kids. What, who are you when no one else is looking? Your, your character, that's, that's your character. That's your humility. Who are you when no one else is looking? And so when I wear his jacket, I like, I feel that with him, and I feel a connection. I think of how proud he is. Like, I just want to make him proud in a way. But I look to him and his legacy that he left me, and that's the legacy that I can be proud of to leave my kids, because I feel like I am doing that. I am living that. I am doing that when no one else is looking. There's, there's a lot that goes on, and I don't want to say what it is. But, but yeah, that's what I'm most proud of, my legacy that I'll be able to leave on.
Thank you. Next for show and tell is Aaron Smith. Go ahead, Aaron.
Yeah, so my, my most valuable thing I have is my family as well. I have a few of them here. Couple of them are hiding, but they're all actually hiding. One's in her room. You can see her back there. But here's the rest of them. This is Lucia, my wife Sarah, her dog. What's our dog's name again?
Sunshine.
And Sunshine, and my son Asher, who's in, at the high school. Holiday is shy, doesn't want to be seen by anybody. But they are all I have and all I need. But that's why we're here. That's why I'm here, to help them and the kids behind them have a great education in our community.
Thank you. Thank you, Aaron. Next up is Jeff Weinbender. What are you going to show us with show and tell?
Okay, well, I'm going to get a little bit different. I sometimes move around when I'm in my classroom at school, and I'm going to do that here. So I, I hope I don't get anybody dizzy. But I'll show you one thing that I'm proud of, and I'll show you hopefully something else. So I'm going out in the dark here. I don't know if this will work. We're going to try this. It's a little later than anticipated. Can we see this? We see absolutely nothing, do we? Okay, that was a good attempt. You can't see anything, can you?
I saw a bush. I saw a bush.
Okay, I was going to show you our little public library that we have that Justina and I put out in front of the house. And it's been so neat seeing different people come up to our house. They go to our little library. And I wanted to show that, but I guess it is too dark out there. I shouldn't have tested this ahead of time. But I can at least show you Justina, my wife. I'll have her come by. Hey, Justina.
Hello.
She teaches English and we put a little public library in front of our house. And it's been, hey, Grace is here. Grace, hey, look, we've got a daughter too. Here's Grace.
Hi.
So anyway, I had them come by. I was going to show you our little public library. It's been needed, something her class put together and I helped finish it off. And it's been real neat for the last probably seven years, watching different kids come up on skateboards to get books, moms bringing their kids. It's just been a wonderful thing in the community.
Thank you. Excellent. So now we are going to go on to our general discussion where all you can participate. So this might well be anywhere from five to more. No, sorry. Rogelio, did I skip you? Sorry, Rogelio. Go ahead, Rogelio. You have something to show.
Yeah, thank you very much. Can you see it? Okay, this is my certificate of election back on 2016. And to me, that's my master's degree, that's my PhD. It, it is what has given me the opportunity to support the students, the teachers and the community as well. They, through the years, they have approached me. And because I, that's, that's why I'm there at the board, to defend the students, to protect the students from calling out board members from spending too much. It's like, for example, I, I have told them so many times, please, and do not spend $150,000 on legal fees. Spend whatever you have to spend, but keep it to a minimum. And all of that extra money should go to our students. And that's why we are there. That's why, that's why I'm there to actually take, take a look at that. Everything is okay. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you. So now we're going to go to the general discussion. And let me explain it to everybody as I change view. This will be an unstructured conversation where candidates will have an opportunity to ask questions of each other and reflect on the issues. They've been asked to not monopolize the conversation. It's an opportunity to see how the candidates might interact with each other in a school board meeting. And will be at least five minutes and maybe more. So I opened it up to you now. Aaron.
Yes, I have a question. If elected, would you commit to learn Spanish, given the fact that Carpandria is mainly Hispanic?
Yes, I already have started. I've made sure everything on my website is translated in English and Spanish. And I even started working the Spanish part of registration at the food bank, registering everybody in Spanish when I speak to them.
Oh, thank you, Jamie. I appreciate that because basically that's all we need. That's what we need because a lot, a lot of people. That would give you the power for people to approach you and ask you questions that, from people who are monolingual. And that way, you could help them out.
Rogelio, I'd like to say yes. You know, that's one of the regrets I had. I was foolish in high school. I took French and I live in Southern California. Not very helpful. I did actually start taking some Spanish here through adult education here in Carp about 20 years ago. And I made it through just a very little amount. My wife is fluent in Spanish, so I often go to her to bail me out. But as a school board member, I want to be able to communicate with more people in this town. And Spanish would be a lifeblood. And if you're on the school board, I'd actually want you to help, help me along the way too. I'd want to practice with you throughout each day because I know in years ago, when I've gone down into, into Mexico and I've gone in Encinata, I start, you know, when you're immersed in the language, you start to speak it a lot better than you do than when it's isolated. So the more practice, the better, especially with somebody who can be gracious and forgiving with pronunciations.
Okay, go to Baja for a couple of months and that's you do it.
All of a sudden, you pick it up and you think differently too because you're thinking in a different language, you know, just the way you approach things. It's, it's fantastic, so.
Correct. For me, I took three years of Spanish at Carp High with Ms. Morales. God rest her soul. She was a wonderful teacher. I was not the best at learning a second language, if I do admit. But I did spend a lot of time in Mexico, Baja, traveling and it came back. It kind of comes back. So I'm reasonable at understanding it, but I cannot speak it. But I can understand what somebody's saying to me. And I, and now my son is taking Spanish. So it's, if it's in my best interest to learn it with him, then I'll give it my best.
Any of you are welcome to bring up any other subject or ask any other question.
So Rogelio, you are, I guess in general, not just Director Rogelio, but since you're the one that brought it up, going over items within the school board agendas. You brought up specifically to legal fees. But I, I know for years, I have personally, just as a parent, gone ahead of time and looked at the agenda items, looked at the attachments. I've emailed and called the district office if I had questions. Would each of you be willing to commit to, to doing that? Taking the time ahead of time before a meeting to ask those questions instead of monopolizing time during the meeting to, to find it out then?
Oh, actually, I, that, Andy Schaefer asked me that question at our last board meeting. And this is what I replied. No, I wouldn't go to the district because if I go, that would be just two persons knowing about it. And that stays there. No, what I want, that, that's why the warrants, for example, legal fees are on the warrants. And to me, I was talking about, about, not the whole two, half of the two. So to me, towards, like for example, Whitney property, legal fees, that, that doesn't tell me anything. So that's why I asked, is there anything wrong with the property? Any litigation? Some damage to the property?
Which is why I was asking, would everybody be willing to ask ahead of time? Because then what you're able?
When I get an answer, I get an answer, then that's for the record. Because that, remember, the community pays for the salary of the district, property taxes.
My point is, Rogelio, because, well, it's for everybody, not just you, but also then if you have a question ahead of time and you ask it to the office, you can then still bring it up at the meeting and say, hey, I had a question about this. It was clarified by the district office that these legal fees for the Whitney property were to get a, a water meter installed, just so everybody knows. I just feel like for expediency of the meetings, time, would, would anybody else be willing to do the homework ahead of time? Instead of waiting till the meeting?
That is why, whenever you, you take the oath, whoever, the agenda doesn't limit itself to 20 minutes. Actually, that, we can stay there as long as five hours. It's there. It's there.
So you're saying you want to monopolize everybody's time? Because I was just at the, I was at the school board, Santa Barbara School Board Association had a, had a conference, a Zoom conference this last week. And they specifically said that school board members are expected to go over everything ahead of time before a meeting and then ask clarifying questions from the district. This was what, from the school board association. They said that this is what you're supposed to do. And then if you want to elaborate during a meeting, so it can be read into the record of what those questions were, what the answers were, that's the time to do it. But it's, but, but by not doing any of the homework ahead of time, I mean, you're asking, we ask our students to do their homework. And, 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 but it seems like some people, maybe they aren't. So anyways, Aaron and Jeff, would you be interested in, in willing to do the groundwork before a meeting?
100%. The way, the way I see it, you, you, you get the agenda, you look at all the items. If you have a question, you go into the district office, you talk to the superintendent. That's the way this is designed. We cannot, as board members, talk to each other before the meeting. That is clear. That is the law. But we can talk to the superintendent for clarity. Her, anybody else in that office who is not a board member can discuss those items and be more educated on it and go to the meeting educated and ready to act, not argue. We have to be ready to act and make things happen. We can't go there to try and showboat and, and throw other people under the bus. We have to be ready to make decisions for the children. And we can ask the questions of the superintendent and be educated on what the costs were, what they're for. And then we go back and we answer and we, we vote. We don't need to, and if, if there is something that is not great that you find, we'll bring it up at the meeting. That's fine. But we don't need to ask every piddly question during the meeting. That's ridiculous.
But that, let me answer you this way. A lot of the questions that I ask, I, there's always a discussion going around. That's when I think of a question to ask right at that moment. That because, and for example, if I'm there, I should be able to answer any question.
Of course, of course.
Or I'll, I'll give you that, for answer next time. But a lot of these, for example, that's why I have every attachments and I, I read them. And most of my questions come up during the meeting itself, during the meeting itself. It's not something that I could have asked Friday or Monday.
The question, what, what is this warrant for is pretty easy to ask.
What was that?
Well, the questions, most of the questions you ask are what are these legal fees for? Those could be clearly asked ahead of time.
No, no, but I, well, this is what's happening that, well, this is, the problem is this. You have, you know what's outside. You know, the agenda, really the documents and everything, but you don't know the inside. I, I mean, this was ideal to me 40 years ago or so, believe me. I even, my family even prayed, oh, I hope that, that you can, can come up with the right decision and the board decides to vote. But I've been there for four years and let's say after 4,000 recommendations by the superintendent, I have been struck out 4,000 times. And that, so now some of you are going to start brand new. And, and that does something that I wrote for, for you. What would you do if none of your recommendations gets approved by the board? What do you have? There are 1,000 recommendations. You are denied. What would you do?
We're going to, we're going to wind this up in just a moment.
Let Jeff answer this question.
Yeah, Jeff.
Yeah.
Would you join the, so I might as well?
Rogelio, Jeff didn't get a chance to answer my question. Could you let him answer my question, please?
Yeah, I'll keep it real quick. Look, yeah, it is really annoying to watch somebody try to figure out their homework in a meeting when you've got a whole bunch of people and you hate to take a meeting and spend it into hours to, to watch somebody figure out what they really believe on something or what the information is on something. I do think asking questions in board meetings and having discussion amongst educated people on the issue is where we want to be as a school board. Because then we can really come from an educated place and then get the fine details out and come to agreements on where we want to go.
Okay, well, thank you for this general discussion. And you can come back to this in your other time periods if you want. We're going to take a couple of questions now that have come into our Zoom session. By the way, if you want to ask a question live on Zoom and have your picture shown all, you can, the, the link is in the comment section on my site, Larry Nimmer's Facebook Live page. And you can click on that link and I may or may not admit you. And if I admit you, don't make a question any longer than 10 seconds. We don't want you to be grandstanding with any questions. I'm going to go to Kim Ortega here. And let's see if we can admit her to, into the Zoom session. And Kim, I guess we're coming to her audio. Kim, you could add, add your camera if you want, but otherwise we see your picture. And Kim, there you are. Kim, go ahead. Do you have a question?
Hi, yeah. I am so glad to see you, Larry, and thank you for admitting me. Thank you, candidates, for hearing my question. And one thing that I would ask is, when you think about your community and you think about what you want for your community and your school, like what's your, what's your number one? Like what do you want to work for, for your number one thing for your school and your community?
Okay, thank you, Kim. Good question. We're going to go to Aaron first with this. And I'm going to get ready to go to the next person, but thank you, Kim. Go ahead, Aaron.
My number one thing, well, it's, it's kind of two parts. It's obviously to increase the equity in the learning. But through that, I would like to see the transition from Catalino and Aliso to the middle school be much smoother. I think there's things we can do ahead of time. I think there's more we can do. We have, I watched it with my son and I, and I dealt with it when I was a student there. The fact that we're mixing multiple elementary schools into one school causes many problems. And it's at a time in those children's age where those problems are even worse. So we need to find solutions to get those kids, like Jamie mentioned, getting those kids together earlier and getting them to know each other earlier so we don't have as many conflicts when we put them in the same building.
Thank you. Next, Jeff, do you have an answer to that question?
Sure. You know, the way I'll put it is, I'd want our students here to be someone you'd be proud to have as your son or daughter. I want to be the type of student that, as Jamie talked about, having character counts being part of what we do in our schools. I'd want that to be a component. And I'd also want students to strive for academic excellence, which builds self-esteem. Nothing is better to see a student who is self-confident, but at the same time gracious and a good member in our community. And that's, that is just what you want everything, I think you want your kids to look like. And that's how I'd like all of our students in Carp to be. People who are good citizens and people who have great character and people who have self-esteem and confidence because they've been able to achieve.
Very good. Rogelio, you're next. What's one of your top priorities?
I, yes. I mentioned the community and I, my mission for this community would be to educate our children. And actually, we, we always refer to the our children. And actually, we, we always refer to the students of the district as our kids. Because basically, your kids are our kids and our duty should be taking care of them. Guiding, uh, so that they could be the best students that they can be, so that they can get promoted from, uh, uh, elementary schools to middle schools, to middle school, to the high school, graduate and, right today, the world belongs to the youth. And from there, they can do whatever they want. They can stay, go to the college, go to UCAB, or go to New York. And that's basically the rule of an educator, of a board member, yes, move, move forward every, every time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And Jamie, you can answer that question now.
So mine is a little less practical, I guess, or tangible in some ways. I, I want our kids, our students and our families to feel a sense of ownership of every school site that they step on. When, when a, when a student, I know personally for me, when I felt a sense of ownership of my school, I took pride in, in how I presented myself. I took pride in my studies. I took pride in how I treated others. And I, and I looked to hold my friends to their best standards as well. So I want our families, I want our parents and our students to all feel a sense of ownership and looking for ways to bring them, let's like pretend like it's not a COVID situation right now, bring them on our campuses, get them involved in our classrooms, get them involved in our various programs. We have a fantastic, a fantastic relationship with the Carpentry and Children's Project with parenting education classes and English learning classes that are available. We have all kinds of amazing resources at our fingertips and I think we just really need to embrace it as a community. And, and that idea of, of helping one another out, being there and, and standing in the gap for one another. And, and I, I really believe that a sense of ownership, creating the opportunity for everybody to feel a sense of ownership over their school sites, the students and the families, is really important.
Okay, well, thank you, Jamie, and thank you all. We're going to take a Zoom question now online with Isa Alarcon. She's joining now. I believe you could introduce yourself in just a second and ask your question. Uh, I, I think, Isa, is your camera on? There we go. Okay, good. Hi. And who are you and what's your question?
Hi, my name's Isa Alarcon and I'm a senior at Carpenter High School. I just want to thank you guys first for this forum and letting me ask you a question. So my question is, we have learned this past summer that several CUSD students have experienced racism and discrimination within our district. So how and are you willing to work with the community to identify the root causes and help solve these issues?
Okay, good. Let's see, we're going to go to Rahelio first. Go ahead, Rahelio.
Yes. Isa, racism is not something that just happened last night. No. It goes back, way, way back to slavery. It goes way back to migrants from other countries. And, uh, basically, uh, we cannot give examples of our own racism. Meaning Hispanics, meaning Black people. There's, it's just too sad that it has happened. And now it's time to, just when we thought that, that, that we were on the right way, then it started back again. I mean, on the, on the streets, but on the school, on the school system, we, that's why you fought, Isa, for equity. And that's why you and every leader on your group got these, uh, multi-literature, multi-literature, literature course approved. And that's why we thank you because we, you have up in the rise.
Okay, thank you. You, you each have 60 seconds for this question. And now it's Jamie Diamond.
So, hey Isa, good to see you. So as you know, I actually, Pam Warner and other mother and I reached out on behalf of the Middle School Parent Group to diversify our narrative and to, to bring a kind of mini-chapter mentorship to the middle school, realizing that waiting until students are in high school is too late. We need to really bring it down to an early age, especially I feel, I, I, I in particular feel that middle school is kind of a boiling point. That's when the attitudes that are, or thoughts that are maybe internal become more external and it's easier to call out an attitude or a behavior and address it. So I think it's really important, definitely at the middle school, to, to, for the teachers who I know they're already working on a, they're doing a fabulous job with their curriculum of not just incorporating authors of color, but also talking about racism in the classroom when, when it's brought up and, and addressing it right then and there and not skirting around the issue. I think educators or everybody in general, parents too, need to give our kids more, understand they're capable.
Well, you can finish your sentence, Jamie. Sorry about that.
They can handle more than we give them credit for. And we can have more open discussions and direct discussions about the tough things with our kids.
Okay, well, thank you. Next, Erin Smith, same question, 60 seconds.
Yeah, I mean, first off, at the, at any of the grade levels, there needs to be zero tolerance for that. That's not, that's not acceptable. And second, I've, I've been watching my daughters in the fifth grade learning about many, many different things from, they're talking about Caesar Chavez currently and the teacher on Zoom in the morning has been talking to them about what's fair, what's equality, what's all this, and giving them all the definitions. And they're, they're having real conversations about it. They're not just talking about a book and then having to go through the book and answer a few questions to be done. They actually talk about the situations in these books. And I think that's where we need to take it all the way down to the younger kids, younger than them, and start talking about the situations in these books and real situations in life to educate them earlier so they can be ready to deal with this sort of stuff.
Okay, thank you. We may be getting some more questions in a moment on Zoom. I'm sorry, did I? Sorry, Jeff. Jeff is on, up still. Go ahead, Jeff.
Hi, hi Isa. My guess is when this happened, your friends were both shocked and upset about it. Right? I, I think people know that this is not okay. And we don't want to see anybody judged by their race. This, this stems from people really not treating each other as, as brothers and sisters. It, it stems from us not wanting to be good to each other. And this, this problem with racism isn't just limited here in the United States. It is worldwide. And it really is. And it stems from a failure to learning to be friends with everyone. I think in our schools, we can learn about each other's cultures. I think that's vital and essential. But more importantly, I think, learn how to be good to everybody in the class. Figuring out how to be good to each other as a community. I think most of the time we succeed, but we need to continue to strive for that.
Hey, hi, thank you. We're getting close to the end of our forum. We have a couple more questions. Let me see here, I'm going to Pam Warner, by the way, is helping me gather the questions from online. Oh, well, actually Krista has been trying to get in. I'm going to admit Krista now. Here comes Krista's iPhone. Stand by. And we can hear you now, Krista, and hopefully in a moment we'll see your picture.
Oh, thanks, Larry. Sorry, I'm not at my best right now. So I have two questions. So I'll pick one. And one is still considering Isa's question and everything going on in our world right now. And that Rahelio is our only Hispanic member of the current board who represents our community and our student population. How will you, if elected, work to support and represent all members and include Rahelio in the conversations and discussions rather than demean him as is currently being done by our current board and administration?
Okay, I think we've kind of already had this question in a way, but anybody can weigh in briefly. Go ahead.
I don't think anybody should ever be demeaned at any, any time. I think everybody deserves equal share, equal time. And I think we need to reach out to represent everybody in the community, no matter what our race or ethnicity is. We need to reach out and talk to the community and have an open and transparent school board.
Okay, and another answer?
So I have made a, a pretty big push over the last few years of ensuring options like translation are available at parent group meetings. And I believe that we need to make it, even though it is currently available technically with, with school board meetings, we need to make simultaneous, simultaneous translation more known and accessible. I know that at my, for my capacity currently, we're looking at other ways of reaching out to parents who, from other communities who, or from our community, Hispanic, the Hispanic community, as far as making sure things are translated in Spanish on paper. We've heard, I've heard a lot of feedback that electronic communication does not work for them. And so I've worked, I'm working hard to try and get more paper done, making a bulletin board with our current issues going on at the middle school, so it's more easily accessible. But I also feel that part of what I said before about, there's a lot of past baggage and past hurts and resentment and, on the board and at the district and the, with the union. And I really feel like we need to just have a moment where we clear the decks, come together and move on with a fresh slate. We, 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 we all need to be the example to the kids that we expect our kids to be. That's, that, that's really important.
Anybody else can jump in on this answer?
Yeah, I would, I would just say, we, we have to do better. We have to treat, we're, we're here to represent our whole community. And our community is, is, is mostly Hispanic. And we have to do a better job. We have to make sure they have a voice. We have to make sure that they get the, the services and the extra interpretation, everything that they need to help their children be successful and for their, and for those children to be successful.
Okay. And was there anybody else that didn't? Yes, go ahead, Rahelio.
Yes, actually, I have been asking for years for this simultaneously interpretation and no answer at all. We had it for about three months with Jamie Persin. But ever since it, I mean, it's, there's nothing now there. I, at board meetings, at the city hall, during this pandemic, I have had so many people, I have asked the board superintendent, we need, we don't need a translator. Maybe they're, they're, they don't know what, a translator and an interpreter. The difference between each other. Translator is individual. An interpreter is for everybody at the same time simultaneously. And to know, I have asked so, so many times to know available that. But I never give up, remember? That's my, my village. I never give up and I'll keep trying to get it. I'll keep trying.
Okay. Well, thank you for that. Krista, thank you for your question. I'm going to admit Laura Flores now to ask a question. Uh, let's see if Laura's coming. Here she comes. And first she's connecting her audio and then we'll get a picture from her, hopefully. Laura, can you hear me?
Yes. Hi.
Hi, Laura.
So hi, my name is Loura Flores. I know I've talked to some of you before. I am a senior at Carpenter High School, like Isa is also. And so I know I asked this on the Facebook earlier, but I really am looking for an answer. So it is evident that the board is not an accurate representation of our community with the majority being Latinx. So how will you ensure that decisions that you make will include all students and community members, not just all students and community members that you represent?
Okay, we've, I think, touched on this some, but let's briefly, let's do 45 seconds for each person. Let's start with Jamie. Go ahead, Jamie.
So, so I, I don't just represent people that look like me. I, I'm there if, if and when elected. I'm there for everybody. So I, I have already reached out. I reach out through the parent group. I reach out and speak with groups at, with, excuse me, with people at CCP during Food Bank. I look for opportunities to be available. And I also am more than happy to meet people. I mean, during the pandemic, it's a little difficult for access, but I would love to meet with people directly. I've been waiting for the ELAC meeting at the middle school to be able to talk with the parents there and, and get a better understanding of what it is that they're struggling with as parents in the school district and their children as well.
Okay, well, thank, let's see, next would be Erin to answer this question briefly. You have 45 seconds.
Yeah, I think, I think we just have to have a, represent, we represent everybody. We have to, yes, I am white, but our community is, is mostly Hispanic. And it's, it's, it's a great question. How, how am I going to prove that? Well, I think we have to be thinking of our whole community. It's not just my community. It's the whole, it's your community. It's everybody's community. And if we all work together and we all strive to, to help all the children learn equally, then that's the best we can do as board members. That's our job. That's why we're here. And that's what I hope to do.
Okay, uh, next, Jeff.
Yeah, I, I certainly hope to represent more than just what I look like. Because if that's the case, I don't have many, you know, bald, middle-aged, white guys all around here. I want to go out and have open lines of communication and listen to people and to make sure that I do represent everyone. I think the board needs to do the same thing. The board needs to go out and every time we think of what we're going to do as a policy, think of Latinx students in our classrooms. Think of them first. What is that situation like for them? And if we don't know, we need to go find out. And we need to think how any of our policies are going to affect them first. Not how it affects us, not how it affects teachers, how does it affect the students? And think of them first.
Okay, well, thank you. I believe everybody had an opportunity to answer. Rahelio, sorry. Go ahead, Rahelio, 90 seconds or 45, 45 seconds.
Slowly, fine. Okay. Okay. For the last four years, I have been 20% of the school board. 20%. That's, there should be at least two more to make it 60%. But it hasn't happened. And I doubt that will happen. It will happen with time, but 20%, that is, remember, if you, any of you were Hispanic, what would you do out of 4,000 recommendations being approved? And none of yours being approved. So that, about two months ago or so, there were, we had 40 speakers. And
Wrap it up if you would.
I wanted to translate and I wasn't allowed until the third time. And that's, yes, unacceptable, unacceptable. That speaks for our school board.
Okay, thank you. And thank you, Laura, for the question. Appreciate your joining our Zoom session. Now for the last segment, we're going to give you all an opportunity for some closing comments. You'll have 90 seconds each. You'll have 90 seconds each. And the order will be Erin, Jeff, Rahelio and Jamie. So Erin, 90 seconds. And go ahead. Let's see. Erin, yeah, go ahead.
Yep, sorry, I was muted for a second. Yeah, I just want to thank everybody for this opportunity and, and coming out tonight. I hope, it's my hope that I can bring my skill sets to the table. Collaboration, problem solving, budgeting, research, to make the right decisions for our students. We need to be fiscally responsible and creative in order to have a sustainable district and improve the level of learning for all of our students. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank, thank you, Erin. Jeff, you're next, 90 seconds.
Thank you for staying to watch this forum even through any of our technical difficulties. I'm glad to know that you care about our schools and our children. I'd love to hear from you. I welcome you to visit winebenderforcarpschools.org on the internet or on Facebook. And you can email me at jeffwinebender@verizon.net. In this world of mixed media messages, our students now more than ever need to seek the truth. They should not be easily swayed by false narratives and misleading posts. Students need the fortitude to ask the big questions to get the big answers. Carpinteria needs great schools. We deserve great schools. I believe we need to seek excellence. We should not be complacent with the status quo. We need to challenge ourselves and our students. Students need to be challenged at school to find out what their capabilities are. When you achieve something you've never done before, you build self-esteem. Our mission is to support students in this task. These are the most challenging days our schools ever have. We've all seen how important it is to our kids and our community for schools. We must strive to not only take care of our, when we had the problem with the pandemic, we quickly came up with some plans. We now need to make the schools what our students deserve. We must all strive to make these upcoming days meaningful and enriching. It can be done and I thank you for your vote.
Thank you. Rahelio, you're next, 90 seconds.
Thank you. Mi consejo a los estudiantes es nunca rendirse. Tienen el potencial para ser doctores, abogados, sociólogos. No permitan que nadie les diga que ustedes no tienen la capacidad para estudiar. Ustedes pueden graduar de la preparatoria y ser un profesionista. Cumplan su sueño educativo. Recuerden, no hay soñador que sea demasiado pequeño ni un sueño que sea demasiado grande. My advice to students is never to give up. You have the potential to be a doctor, an attorney, a sociologist. Do not let anyone to tell you that you do not have the capacity to study because you do and you can graduate and be a professional. Fulfill your educational dream. Remember, there is no dreamer that is too small and no dream that is too big. And always, always move forward. And thank you for the opportunity to speak up and that's my platform.
Thank you. And Jamie, you're last with 90 seconds. You're muted, Jamie.
I did it. I made it all the way to the end. Okay. Thanks, everybody. This has been a really great opportunity. But I just want to reiterate on behalf of all of us, you know, it's really hard to have, to get a good idea of somebody just from, you know, 60-second soundbite. You can get, you can get the gist of things, but I really would like to encourage you to reach out to all of us. Myself, you know, especially. But reach out to us and ask us questions. Talk to us. I'm more than happy to have a conversation with you. I've taken numerous phone calls, responded to numerous emails. I'd love to have a conversation with you. I want the best for our district. I've, I've been involved for years as a parent. And to me, this is kind of the epitome of being an involved parent. And I, and I feel like I've, I've been building up to this time to, to serve our community in this capacity. I feel like I've built some great relationships with our teachers, with other parents, with the district. And, and I'd really like to be able to bring my ability to think critically and creatively on the spot and, and bring that to the table to troubleshoot. We have, we have problems. I mean, every district does. So let's, let's figure it out. I'd love to talk with you and, and answer questions. JDforCUSD.com or info@JDforCUSD. And I really appreciate your vote. Thanks for your time tonight.
Well, thank you. And thank you to all the candidates. This is a reminder that Craig Cook was not able to join us. His family's on a camping trip. He hoped to get an internet connection, but apparently he didn't. I think you all did a good job, candidates. And thanks to the viewers for watching and your interest in our schools. Stay tuned for the City Council Forum, which will be next Tuesday, October 13th at 7:00 PM. The plan is to have it on the Alcazar Theater's Facebook page. But last minute, it may be on my Facebook page, Larry Nimmer. Anyway, for the Alcazar Theater, I'm your moderator Larry Nimmer and have a good evening. And thanks again. Let me get a gallery view of all the candidates and you're welcome to wave goodbye.
And happy anniversary to Erin and Sarah Smith. It's their 20th wedding anniversary tonight.
Happy anniversary.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. And Tara's reminding me, this will be available to watch afterwards on both the Alcazar Theater's Facebook page and on my Facebook page. With all the comments and you're welcome, candidates, to go and give answers to the comments you see. So, thanks so much and nice to see you all.
Have a good night.
Bye.